Everyone, it is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, 7:00 PM. Meeting number 5288 with the clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Chuck Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Chadwick Collins.
Here.
Mayor Michael Burris.
Here.
Mayor Jeff Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Daniel Moore.
Here.
At this time, it's invocation by Pastor Eric O'Neil from the Church of the Nazarene. Welcome.
City Commissioner, thank you for the honor of being here tonight. And members of the City Commission and fellow citizens, would you pause with me for a moment of prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, you are in this place. You are present with us, and we are grateful to begin this meeting by acknowledging our dependence on you for the work ahead. For that, we offer these requests that these leaders will be guided by your wisdom in their deliberations, inspired by your compassion in their decisions, and would demonstrate your humility as they seek to serve this community well. Leadership carries a weighty responsibility, grant them the strength to bear this burden. As they conduct the business of this city, may their actions honor the trust placed in them, that they may do the work you have given them to do with courage, integrity, and for the common good, for the sake of the one who comes among us as one who serves, the one who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, will you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into a public hearing on the revenue neutral rate. Nicole?
Mayor Commissioners, the revenue neutral rate anticipated for the 2025 budget is thirty-six point two-two-six. Okay, the revenue neutral rate that was given by the county for the 2025 budget is thirty-six point two-two-six. The anticipated mill levy for the city's 2025 budget is thirty-six point two-three-one. The total mill levy for the 2024 budget was thirty-eight point two-two-seven. Later in the meeting, there will be a resolution allowing the city to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And this would only be actually exceeding the revenue neutral rate by point zero-zero-five. And this is just the maximum amount we would be able to levy. At the next meeting is when the actual budget will be passed, and the mill levy could still be less than the revenue neutral rate that's approved tonight.
Just a little bit more information, this is the eighth year in a row that the City Commission, city has lowered the mill levy. We are actually five percent lower now than the city of Garden City's mill levy, and we're in the top ten lowest cities in Kansas as far as mill levies go now. So there's, we're, I think we're eighth or ninth right now in the state of Kansas as far as lowest mill levies go.
And that would be specific to the city portion?
The city's portion of mill levy. The school district is looking at reducing their mill levy substantially as well, which will, if that does get passed, county's going to lower theirs a little bit this year as well to the revenue neutral rate. And the community college, I believe, is keeping their mill levy flat for this year. But with those decreases, it looks like we'll be on par with Fannie County as far as our total tax levy. But this will be the second year we'll be lower than Garden City as well.
So, so our revenue neutral rate is about, what, two mills less than what, approximately than what was levied last year?
That's correct.
Is that two-mill levy, that revenue neutral rate, applicable to, say, the community college in the county? Are they both at revenue neutral, probably two mills less, if they choose to be?
Yes, but their two mills, of course, is a much greater number than what ours is. You know, one mill of property tax for the city generates, what is that number?
One-seventy-five, two-hundred thousand?
Two-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-ten thousand, I believe, for one mill. For the county, it would be about, about three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred thousand dollars, and the same with the community college. Okay.
Okay, we have anybody in the audience that would care to come forward and speak about this, ask questions? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing for neutral, revenue neutral rate, and seek approval for the agenda this evening.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. At this time, we're going to move into petitions and proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is a proclamation of veteran foreign wars of the United States, 125th anniversary on September 29th, 2024. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign War of the United States, known as VFW, was founded in 1899 by a small group of veterans who returned from a campaign on Cuba and in the Philippines, banded together to create a veterans organization that would advocate on behalf of all veterans. And whereas the VFW is a nonprofit veterans service organization comprised of eligible veterans, military service members, and active guard and reserve forces. And whereas the VFW's mission is to foster camaraderie, camaraderie among United States veterans of overseas conflict, to serve our veterans, the, the, the military and the community, and to advocate on behalf of all veterans. And whereas, since inception of the VFW, has been instrumental in establishing the Veterans Administration, the National Cemetery System, and creation of every national veterans memorial. And whereas, the VFW has played a vital role in virtually every significant piece of veterans legislation passed in the 20th and 21st century, to include honoring our PAC Act, the most significant expansion of veterans benefits in history. And whereas, the VFW, 125th anniversary, is being observed on September 29th, 2024, this date shall officially be known as VFW Day. And now, therefore, I, be it resolved, that I, Chuck Taylor, mayor of Dodge City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 29th as Veterans Day in honor of the VFW's valuable contributions to the veterans in the community in Dodge City, Kansas, and around the world. We hereby stand with the VFW to ensure veterans are respected for their service and always receive their earned entitlements and are recognized for their sacrifice and their loved ones have made on behalf of the great country. I witness thereof have, have unset my hand in officially see, the seal of Dodge City, Kansas, on this third day of September, 2024. Anybody in the audience care to come and speak on behalf of the veteran day?
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, City Commissioners, City Employees, citizens of Dodge City, and my fellow comrades and auxiliary members of Post 1714. I'd personally like to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to attend this proclamation and giving the never-ending patriotic support to Post 1714. The city has been very amazing to us, and we do appreciate it. From all of you in this room, to the, the fire department, the, the police department, and everybody, the city employees. Anytime that we've asked for any kind of assistance, we've always gotten a yes, and that is very much appreciated. As you know, the Dodge, or the VFW has been around for, you know, this will be 125 years since it was chartered by Congress. But some recent history I'd like to share with all of you tonight that we recently learned over the weekend was that the American Legion Post 47 here in Dodge City, and Howard Goshel Post 1714 in Dodge City, are both named after two men from Ford, Kansas, that were friends and served together in World War I. They were friends, they served together, and they were killed together. And to this day, they rest almost together, one grave apart in France. So, the American Legion is named after Charlie, Charlie, yeah, excuse me, Charles Ernest Scott, and the VFW Howard Goshel. So, the history of Dodge City veterans runs very deep. You know, those of us here today, and I apologize, you think of veterans, we'd be a little bit earlier on time getting here, so I apologize. But the history of veterans in Dodge City runs very deep, and we also want to make sure we take care of the veterans, we, and the military members we currently have serving. The Kansas National Guard, Alpha Battery First, the 161 Field Artillery, and Det 3, the 129 Army Reserve down on South Dodge. So, I spent many years as a reservist myself, and a lot of people don't realize that there's an Army Reserve unit here, they're just National Guard, and, and that's it. So, I, again, I want to thank you for doing the proclamation for the VFW. It is very much appreciated. And before I end, as we're approaching 9/11, I want to bring it to the city's attention that the VFW has a national program every year for first responders, police, law enforcement, or law enforcement, first emergency medical technicians, and the firefighters. So, we have the applications. I encourage the city, you guys, to nominate your, your city workers, you know, of that first responder category, and give them the recognition they deserve. We feed them breakfast when they come up, and they really like that, so we do appreciate them. And we've also had some times where the doors have been accidentally left open, and the PD has very graciously, you know, done a walkthrough and everything. But again, the VFW is here for veterans. We've come a long ways from a year and a half ago to now, and we hope we, hope that's recognized. Days run together, and about a year ago, I was asked a question to myself that was asked at a different, different organizational meeting. If the VFW closed down and shut the doors today, would the community even realize we're gone? And at that time, I had to answer no, because I didn't feel like we were enough involved with the community. And we have strived to change that over the last year and a half. So, I think everyone in this room is hearing the VFW name, or seeing something we're doing, and we hope to be here for a really long time. So again, thank you, Mayor Taylor, City Commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you, Casey, and thanks for bringing your comrade with you. We do, we do appreciate you, and I want to honor you guys in any way we can. Oh, with this thing?
You want to hold this up here?
Oh, yes.
No, just me. Thank you.
This is me. Thank you.
I actually, I actually have you all, so on three, one, two, three, we'll get a couple. Thank you all for your service.
The guys don't have a statement for the rest of the meeting?
We just had a meeting, that's what we're.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our next proclamation here is Welcoming Week 2024 proclamation. Whereas individuals, including immigrants and refugees, are a vital part of our community, bring fresh perspective and new ideals, starting businesses, and contribute to vibrant diversity that will all add value. And whereas Dodge City success depends on making sure that all individuals feel welcome here. And whereas, regardless of where you're born or what you look like, we are Dodge City united in our efforts to make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas Dodge City has celebrated Welcome Week since 2013. And whereas, this year will mark the Fifth Annual International Festival Celebration. And whereas this week, we honor the spirit and unity that, that is bringing neighbors together, making Dodge City a kind of place where people from around the world feel valued and wanted to put down their roots. Now, therefore, I Chuck Taylor, mayor of the city of Dodge City, do hereby proclaim the week of September 13th, 2024 through September 22nd, 2024, as Welcome Week in Dodge City. I invite all Dodge City residents to join the movement in communities worldwide by renewing our commitment to acting in the spirit of welcoming unity. Anybody care to speak on this? Hi there. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Carmona. I am the chairperson of the Cultural Relations Advisory Board, and I'm here to extend an invitation for this Sunday, September 8th, at the Wright Park, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, the International Festival. This year, our festival will feature Crossroads Kitchen, which showcases nine different countries. They will be representing their dishes for different flavors and traditions from their home. We will also have a variety of entertainment from local artists, business owners, cultural fashion show, car show, and over 25 vendors. We will also have six food trucks there. The event will be held at Wright Park around the bench, and this marks the fifth year, a celebration born from the Dodge City community, the Dodge City Area Chamber of Commerce Multicultural and the Cultural Relations Advisory Board. One of the iconic symbols of the festival is the flag display. However, due to the ongoing street skate project, we've relocated the event to the Wright Park. Each year, the festival continues to grow and provide with opportunity to celebrate the rich diversity in our community and give residents a chance to proudly showcase their cultural heritage. Thank you for the proclamation for Welcoming Week, and we look forward to seeing you at Wright Park this Sunday for a day filled with food and fun. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to move into the visitor section. A limit of five minutes per individual, fifteen minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until next City Commissioner meeting unless an emergency situation does, does exist. Anybody in the audience care to come forward and speak in the visitor section? Seeing none, I'll close the visitor section, seek some action on the consent calendar.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next, we'll move into ordinance and resolutions. Resolution number 2024-16, a resolution exceeding the revenue neutral rate for 2025 budget. Report by Nicole May, Finance Director.
Mayor Commissioners, earlier in the meeting, we held the public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate. And just for those in the community, there was no one who came forward to speak regarding this. The city is anticipating exceeding the revenue neutral rate. The revenue neutral rate established for the 2025 budget is thirty-six point two-two-six mills. The anticipated mill levy for the 2025 city of Dodge City budget is thirty-six point two-three-one mills. I would also like to note that the mill levy for the 2024 budget was thirty-eight point two-two-seven. So, this is a decrease in the mill levy. In March of 2021, the legislature approved Senate Bill 13 requiring any taxing subdivision that intends to exceed their revenue neutral rate to give additional notice and have a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. The Ford County Clerk has notified all taxpayers of the revenue neutral rate hearings and levy changes, and it was also published in the Dodge, in the Dodge City Daily Globe. The, with the anticipated revenue neutral rate of thirty-six point two-three-one, this exceeds the revenue neutral rate by point zero-zero-five mills, and is still one-point-nine-nine-six mills less than the 2024 budget. The city may adopt a budget with a mill levy less than this anticipated mill levy, but the final budget cannot exceed this mill levy. So, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer those. And the final adoption of the budget will be done at the September 16th meeting. So, this, this is not final adoption of the budget or anything. This is just authorizing to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Any questions for Mrs. May?
Ideally, wouldn't we have seen the budget in a meeting prior to this? I mean, wouldn't that be the normal course? What, it's like we're, we're setting the not-to-exceed number, yet we haven't formally been introduced to the budget. I mean, I know you sent it out last week, but we haven't really gone over it as a group. Ideally, wouldn't we want to have gone over that, at least one through, before we set a not-to-exceed number?
Um, I mean, you, we could.
I mean, what's hindering us from doing that? I mean, I know today it's probably too late, but like, next year?
Yes.
Would we not want to see a, a one-through on the budget before we go and set a not-to-exceed number?
Yes, and that is my goal, to have this process started sooner next year, so we can pretty much, we, you could adopt the budget and pass this at the same time.
Yeah.
That is my goal for next year, is to be able to do this all.
Yeah, because you're going to limit the CIP and the MRF programs at, at this point, you know, that you're not going to have any major changes in those as we adopt this. And I don't think anybody's complaining about lowering the mill levy. It's just that you're going to limit that opportunity if that, if the commission so wanted to do something different in CIP or MRF. You've taken that away from us a little bit, so.
Yeah, I, I, this was just prepared with the Dodge City manager.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get it. I mean, it's, the state kind of put us under some deadlines, you know, that are somewhat imaginary. Seeing how sometimes you don't get the, all the documents from the county in a timely manner, so.
Any further questions? Any action?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 20, 24-60.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any new business. First item, approval of bids for purchase of four new trucks. Report by Ryan Reed, Director of Administration Services.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm here to request approval for four trucks and one cargo van for parks, utilities, and facilities through different departments. These vehicles will enable them to fulfill their duties and transport staff and equipment to job sites. The vehicles that they replace will be sold at auction. And we did receive two bids for each, we had two vendors bid, so we had two bids for each vehicle. And staff is recommending purchasing all these vehicles from Lewis Chevrolet. They were less expensive in, in many cases on the bids, and in all cases, they can deliver the vehicles faster, according to the bid docs. The total is three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-and-sixty-nine dollars, and this is a budgeted purchase. Of these five vehicles, only the cargo van is really a brand-new type. Only, only the cargo van is not replacing anything. All, all the other ones are replacing vehicles that are going to auction or were damaged beyond recognition. But the, the cargo van is a new thing for facilities to use to get around. I think it's for the, the custodians and stuff, to be able to get from building to building and transport stuff. Do you have any questions for me tonight?
Any questions or any action on this item?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the bids from Lewis Chevrolet for four trucks and a van in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-sixty-nine dollars.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Number two, approval of change order number 16 for the expansion of the South Wastewater Treatment Plant. Report by Ray Slattery, Director of Engineering. Mr. Slattery?
Mayor and Commissioners, tonight, I'm going to ask your approval of change order number 16 for the upsizing of the flame trap in GHB-2, which is gas handling building number two. Changing the biogas flow meter in GHB-1 and upsizing the mono rail and crane at the intermediate pump station in the amount of sixty-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. This will, this will be taken from the contingency fund of the project. Change order 16 consists of upsizing the flame trap in GHB-2 from an eight-inch to a 10-inch to better match the new piping and the capacity of the raw biogas that will be going through GHB-2 once the upgrades are completed. It was planned to use the existing eight-inch, but as the project has gone forward, it was decided that a 10-inch flame trap is actually better. The cost of the 10-inch flame trap is sixteen-thousand-fourty-nine dollars. We're also changing from the Sierra Biogas Flow Meter in GHB-1 to a Fluid Components International Flow Meter. The original plan was to reuse the Sierra Flow Meter. However, with the 2025 Biogas Regulatory Reform Act that is going to be taking place in January of '25, the EPA requires that flow meters be recognized through the Alternative Measurement, Measurement Protocol, or AMP. AMP lists the approved measurement equipment, and the Fluid Component International Flow Meter is listed in there, however, the Sierra is not. If we do not change to a recognized flow meter, any of the gas that goes through there would, would not be eligible for the EPA credits. The cost of, not to mention, the other flow, GHB, flow meters and the other GHBs will also be Fluid Component International Flow Meters, and we'll be able to interchange those and calibrate them out at the same time. The cost for this flow meter is twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-one. We need to upsize the mono rail and the crane at the intermediate pump station to meet the size of the new pumps and motors. The mono rail had to be upsize from a W-14 dash thirty to a W-14 dash forty-three steel beam, dash forty-three steel beam, and the crane upsized from one to two tons. The cost of this upgrade was eight thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, the other twelve thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars of the change order represents costs associated with UCI performing this work. Um, as I mentioned, this cost will come from contingencies. There is still a three hundred eighty-four dollars, nine hundred and three, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents in contingencies. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
So Ray, just to guess, I mean, percentage-wise, how far are you along to being done? I mean, um, with the, I know we had a little stumble here, but...
The expansion work is nearing probably seventy-five percent. Complete. We still have to, and, and they're working on this right now, um, place the clay liner in the two new facultatives. Um, we'll have to do the HPE liner on the sides of those facultatives. We have some, um, pipe, piping work to do, um, at the anaerobic number three to get the Hillmar wastewater in there, which is being currently done. Um, we've actually shifted flow of the National Beef Wastewater from number three to one and two so that number three could cool off and we could peel the cover back so that, uh, the construction workers could get in there safely and complete that work. There, then there is some, um, work at the, the biggest part piece of this yet is the biogas buildings. One and two have to be, uh, modified and, and enlarged to handle the new blower system that's going in.
When does that work start?
Um, I've, any time now on GHB two while the anaerobic is down, they'll be working on it.
Sometime in the future when it's appropriate, can you come and give us a presentation about what exactly went wrong or what you know do went wrong at, at it there?
Yeah, at this time, we, at this time, we're still in our investigation.
Yeah, it's, it's when it's appropriate.
Yep.
Okay, any action on this, uh, change order number sixteen?
You ought to move, make a motion to approve change order number sixteen for the upsizing of the flame trap in GHB two, changing the biogas flow meter in GHB one, and upsizing the monorail and crane in the intermediate pump station in the amount of sixty thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second. We have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Ray. Uh, next item is approval of Cargill Edition Unit One Plat, report by Nathan Luttrell, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Can I ask you for your consideration of Cargill Edition Unit One Plat? The applicant lineage logistics, uh, works in partnership with Cargill. They're expanding their operations and the building, and we recently annexed this property that is seeking to be platted. This plot will create two lots and includes both utility easements and travel easements. And this property is owned I-two heavy industrial, and the proposed lots meet the minimum lot size requirements. The planning commission met on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, reviewed and voted five-zero to recommend approval of this plot. And it is also city staff's recommendation to approve this plot. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So this is in front of the legit lineage out there?
Correct. And this property had never been platted, and it's kind of more standard protocol to plaid the property and establish easements and everything like that along with it, so kind of cleaning up some stuff that should have been done years ago, in addition to allowing for the expansions, so.
Okay. Any further questions? Mr. Luttrell, or any action?
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the plat, changing the property to I-two heavy industrial.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Uh, number five, approval of authorization number ten for reconstruction of runway two-two-zero service at Dodge City.
Number four, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon?
Number four, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we skipped, we skipped number four. Hang on, let me re, let me regroup up here. Approval of, uh, Water Heights Unit Three Plat, uh, report by Nathan Luttrell, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay.
Sorry, not trying to, not, try not to kick you off soon.
I'm asking for your consideration of Walter Heights Unit Three Plat. Uh, that applicant, Q Car, Q Parker Investments owns the majority of the Comanche Plaza Shopping Center located at seventeen hundred block and North Fourteenth Avenue at the intersection of roughly of Comanche and fourteen. The property owner is looking to potentially sell off a portion of this property. In order to do so, it will need to be, need to be replatted in order to divide it up into separate lots. This plot consists of three lots, includes travel easements and access agreements, essentially is creating, um, the entire parking lot will be an access easement to allow for, um, parking and access to all the different lots and businesses in this development. Planning Commission, um, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, reviewed and voted to five-zero to recommend approval of this plot, and it is also city's recommendation to approve this plot. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Nathan, the, the entire plat is, is what they're subdividing. There, there's one, lot one's only sixty-three foot wide, is that developable?
Um, yes, it would be. Uh, the minimum lot width is fifty feet for commercial. Well, actually, it's twenty-five feet at the front setback, so, and basically, it does, is basically the lot, it is the width of the store that is there currently than most there, the north one, that lot one.
Any further questions or any action?
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, Walter Heights Unit Three Plat as presented.
Second. We have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner.
Uh, prun, moving on, approval authorization number ten for reconstruction of runway two-two-zero service Dodge City Regional Airport, report by Corey Keller, Public Works Director. Mr. Keller?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm here tonight to request approval of authorization number ten. That's for, uh, construction services with, uh, Burns and McDonnell in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, uh, to complete the construction services for the reconstruction of runway two-two-zero. I believe those last commission meeting, y'all approved the, uh, grant to move forward with the grant. Uh, we signed the grant, uh, uh, prior or after that meeting and sent it back to FAA. So this is just approving, um, the, the, the next pieces of that. So we did conduct an IFE with, uh, Benish, uh, out of Manhattan, Kansas. The IFE for the same services came back at nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, uh, which is ten percent, a little over ten percent higher than the estimated cost that, uh, Burns and McDonald's provided the city. So IFE is within FAA standards to proceed with Burns and Mac's contract. This is a ninety-five-five, uh, local match, or ninety-five federal funds, five percent local match, um, of the eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. FAA will pay eight hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and the city will pay, uh, forty-three thousand one hundred dollars for that. So it is a budgeted, uh, project, budgeted within the project out of the Capital Improvement Fund. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And this would also be pending, uh, legal's, uh, evaluation of the contract, so, sorry about that.
Any questions for Mr. Keller?
I think they pour that concrete, Corey.
Um, it'll be eight inches thick, I believe, yeah. It'll have a little over thirty thousand pound, uh, rating, so it's not as, as, uh, in-depth as the main runway one-four-three-two, which is a hundred and ten dual-wheel rating.
Other questions or any action?
Your honor, I make a motion to approve authorization number ten with Burns and McDonnell in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-two thousand to complete the construction services for reconstruction of runway, runway two-twenty.
Pending legal review.
Pending legal review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Uh, next is approval for bids to reconstruct runway two-two-zero, uh, at Dodge City Regional Airport, report by Corey Keller, Public Works Director.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, here tonight to ask, uh, approval to approve, uh, low bidder Volks Barga Construction LLC to reconstruct runway two-two-zero for a total of eight million five hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Back in May, May twenty-third, uh, staff received and opened two bids for the reconstruction of runway two-two-zero. The bids received were from Volks Barga Construction LLC in Newton, Kansas, uh, for the eight million five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety, or five hundred and nineteen nine hundred and eighty-five twenty-five. The second bid received was from Cost Construction Company out of Topeka, Kansas for nine million seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, uh, uh, one hundred and eleven dollars and three cents. Um, on August twenty-ninth, uh, staff conducted a, uh, a, uh, phone interview with Volks Barga to go over, uh, the, um, the contract to make sure that they understand all of the, uh, FAA issuances and, uh, met the requirements of that portion of the contract. They, uh, had everything in place to, uh, perform the job. They understand what the job requires of them. Um, they've worked, uh, several other airport projects, so they're aware of FAA's, uh, requirements and what will be required of them for, uh, this particular job, so. For, uh, the total project, uh, the FAA grant was nine million three hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. With, or I guess with, um, with this piece, the total grant will be nine hundred, or nine million three hundred and eighty-six four eighty-five twenty-five. Um, that includes the, uh, the portion for the, uh, Volks Barga's, uh, bid and the engineering construction services along with the forty-five hundred dollars that would, uh, needed to conduct the IFE. Um, this amount will be about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I believe, lower than what was originally budgeted. Um, the engineer's estimate was for twelve million one hundred and seventy thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, so this is well below, uh, that engineer's estimate. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have they done work prior?
Yeah, they have, yeah. They've, uh, they've actually had very, very, very good references, um, a great bend, um, some ramp space on great bend that they've done, um, some pretty, pretty good-sized jobs, uh, as far as that goes. And so, uh, I know some out of Wichita as well, um, so, yeah.
They're just finishing up. I looked at the web pages, they're just finishing up an airport somewhere in, in eastern Kansas, so some runway work.
Yeah, but, yeah, they, they had very good, uh, references. I'm very confident that they'll be capable of do, doing the job, so.
Just leaving one point three million on the table, make you nervous?
No, no, yeah. No, I was actually, uh, you know, worried that we'd be over the twelve, so, yeah, when it came under, I was, uh, very happy about that, so.
And they have inspectors on all these jobs, don't they?
And that's what Burns and McDonald is there for to, to do, um, so do the quality control, they'll make sure that they meet all those requirements and, uh, and ensure that FAA, as well as the city sees that those things are met, so.
Corey, when does it sound like they'll get started, and do they have kind of a timeline for?
Yeah, uh, it'll be in the, uh, spring is when the project will set to start, but as we start moving, we'll get the contracts, uh, going, have to go through pre-bid meetings and, and do those times, types of things to set the, the date.
Yeah.
They're, they're not going to want to start anything and then go into a winter shutdown.
Sure.
And then, so it'll be, I'm sure, and they were aware of that when we, uh, bid the, the project, so given, uh, how long it took to get the, the funding, so.
Do these kind of contracts have any type of, I don't know the terminology, but some sort, something in the, in there that will retain them here, not put us at risk of them leaving this job to go work on another?
So when we bid the project, there was given a hundred and twenty days to keep the, the price, and so, um, we're getting close to that, that deadline, so that's why I wanted to get it on this commission meeting. I believe it's, uh, closer to the end of September when we hit that hundred and twenty days, but we're, we're getting close. But they're, they're well aware of everything that's, that's going on and fully committed to, to performing the works.
I think Commissioner Burns' concern is, the company comes in, they start the project, and then they pull off the project to go work on another one.
Uh, there are liquidated damages, uh, within, yeah, within the project, so, I mean, they would be subject to that just like any other contractor. So they have a certain amount of days, certain amount of timeframe to complete the job. We haven't discussed what the phasing is, but FAA's requirement, you know, this takes this amount of time, after that, you're paying liquidated damages. So, and that would be, uh, you know, um, I, I don't remember the exact amount, but, yeah, substantial amount of money, so.
Okay.
Your honor, make a motion to approve the, uh, bid from, uh, Volks Barga Construction LLC in the amount of eight million five hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. We have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Corey. Okay, next is un, other business we have none, staff report, Mr. Hernandez?
Mayor Commissioners, we have, um, budget retreat slash project discussion Saturday from eight to eleven. Uh, we've been working on topics, we'll get you kind of a proposed, um, subject list here probably tomorrow, uh, once we have that completed. The other item is Leak County Municipalities Annual Conference. If you're interested, uh, please let us know so we can get you a room and get you registered.
Mrs. May?
I have nothing.
Few more?
Nothing for me.
You in the back?
I'm gonna go.
Oh.
So just a reminder, the nine-eleven, uh, memorial, uh, will be on Wednesday, nine-eleven. Um, we will have the normal memorial service at seven PM at Liberty Gardens and Wright Park. Um, we'll also be conducting a, uh, tree planting ceremony, which will start at seven forty-five AM. Um, this year, it's going to be in Fort Dodge, uh, so we'll plant all four, five trees out at, uh, Fort Dodge. Uh, it'll be at seven forty-five AM, eight oh three AM, eight forty-five AM, and at nine-ten AM. So I would, uh, love for each of you to come out during those times and, uh, and, um, be a part of those, and any, anybody within the community as well, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Corey. All right, well, I would seek a motion for adjournment.
Your honor, I make a motion to be adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are now adjourned, thank you.